Good morning. I'll call the order, the May 4th, a meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wies?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Would you please stay standing and for the flag salute and then please remain standing for the moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, if everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now Brad, our IT Director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning Brad.
Assuming users are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants tab toward the bottom of the screen, that will reveal a raise hand function toward the bottom right of your screen. Select that function and that lets the host know that you'd like to speak in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Norman, I'm from Kansas. Normally, we don't allow them to speak on informational items, so I'm going to address it now. Before we get involved in this heritage area partnership, you better look at it very carefully because you're going to open up a can of worms. They call it private property rights. Whose private property rights are we talking about? This is a issue that has been ongoing for over 200 years.
Norman, and I just want to say, that is on today's agenda and so...
Well, okay, well, I'd be able to comment. Okay, I just wanted to, what's my opinion?
Okay, yeah, we'll have some time at that time. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Dalton, State of Florida. With, as you know, all the prices on everything is going up, so... If, this mic's not working. But, if you guys, I would recommend that you guys start spending a little money on your equipment and stuff, right now, before the prices skyrocket. Because I know steel is at an all-time high, and it's just going to get worse. So, if you guys need anything from like, with the Rose Department and stuff, I'd recommend getting it now. Because I was looking at some equipment futures. Payloaders are expected to go up in the next five years to eighty, anywhere from twenty thousand more than what they are to eighty thousand. And that's for the smaller size, and that can go up even more, even as far as a hundred thousand, or some of the way out there. Just something to keep in mind when you guys are doing your budget, so you can...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Possibly do it now.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, no one else wish? At this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax roll, approval of counts payable, review of the township and cemetery district annual reports, and approval of public forum. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. Presentations, we'll move into presentations. Item one.
Oliver Haag Scholarship Certificate Presentations.
Come on. Good morning, Mr. Flaherty.
So on April 20th, the board commissioner has approved an award to a $1,000 renewable scholarship. So I'll give you a little bit of an insight about that. A gentleman by the name of Oliver Haag will to Celine County 1,100 acres of farm ground. In his will, Mr. Haag stated it was his wish to land to use for conservation and education. There have been numerous projects done on the farm over the years, but one of the most important of these was in 2001, when Celine County established the Oliver Haag Memorial Scholarship Fund. Each year, a renewable $1,000 scholarship is awarded to a Celine County High School senior. Criteria for this scholarship is community involvement, strong school ethic, and the applicant's desire to continue his or her post-secondary education. So with that being said, I'm proud, we are proud to announce this year's Oliver Haag $1,000 renewable scholarship. And the first one's going to go to Jackson Gebhardt. Jackson, if you just want to state your name and tell them where you go to school.
My name is Jackson Gebhardt. I'm from southeast of Celine, and I plan on going to Dodge City Community College.
Congratulations on your... Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you again. And the second one is going to Adelaide.
Hi, my name is Adelaide Easter. I am from Sacred Heart High School, and I will be going to Kids' Day in Douglas County, July 3rd.
Congratulations.
Perfect.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you again.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into action items. Item one.
RFA 161-21 Amendment Number Two to Celine County's Health Insurance Plan. Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning Marilyn.
Good morning Commissioners. Celine County's health plan provides for annual wellness activities that pay at 100%, which include preventative routine mammograms and breast exams. Members who have experienced a mastectomy in the past continue to have those preventative routine mammograms, but the claims are not coded as preventative or routine, but as diagnostic. So not to create a barrier for those members who continue these preventative routine activities, we are recommending approval of this amendment that allows for the first mammogram per plan year to be covered as preventative routine regardless of diagnosis. The alternatives for action is to approve and sign the amendment, or do not approve and assign the amendment. There is no budget impact. However, we feel that for our plan, that it will better be able to catch things early.
Okay. Are there any questions by the Commissioners? Or comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I'll bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the amendment to the health insurance plan as submitted by staff.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 161-21 Amendment Number Two to Celine County's Health Insurance Plan. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wies?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might let you know that we cannot hear anyone who uses the podium. Podium microphone obviously is not working and so if you call and somebody has a question for us, we can't hear that podium.
Okay, and I think, do we want to look at that right now, or... Okay, keep rolling. Okay. All right. Item number two.
RFA 162-21 Survey and Civil Services Livestock and Expo Center. Hannah Stanbauer, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning Commissioners. As you heard from last week's discussion on the livestock and expo center, this is probably one of the first action items that you will have. Both survey and civil services are required for several of the different upgrades that will be taking place at the livestock and expo center. So our project manager Hutton solicited quotes and bids from both services for civil and survey services. We did receive a total of four proposals for those services, three of them that met all of the scopes that was required for the projects that are to take place over the next several years at the livestock and expo center. This, the alternatives that you have are for approval for a company, Lochner, for the total cost of 18,500. Approve bids with Cobb Valley for a total cost of 23,600. Approve services with Earl's Engineering for a cost of 24,650. Or do not approve the bids and provide staff with further direction. Our recommendation is to approve the low bid for these professional civil services with Lochner Incorporated for the cost of 18,500. And the cost for these survey and civil services will be taken through with the CIP funds that have been allocated for all of the livestock and expo improvements.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the Commissioners? Any comments or questions by the public? I will bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the low bid for professional civil services with Lochner Inc. in the amount of 18,500.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we, excuse me, approve RFA 162-21 Survey and Civil Services Livestock and Expo Center. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wies?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item number three.
RFA 156-21 Acceptance of 2020 Audit Report. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners. So, one of the important, but hopefully not too exciting functions of the board is to accept the audit report each year after it is prepared by our independent auditor. So, I'll introduce Randall Hoffmeyer from the firm of Lindbergh, Vogel, Pierce, and Ferris to present the report. And Randy, I'll have you sit over here because of the mic issues.
That would be great.
Good morning Randall.
Good morning. I expect that everyone has gotten a copy of the audit report and had a chance to look at it.
Yes, sir.
Good, then I won't have to read it to you.
We get a Reader's Digest version?
Yeah, you're going to get a short version. The first thing I want to go over is the Board of Governance Letter. It's also titled the SAS 114 Letter. Every year, we're supposed to provide this communication to you. Our professional standards require it. They feel like it's important, so we'll just hit some of the high points in it. First thing, the first paragraph says that we've audited the financial statements, which we have, and it gives the standards that we use to perform the audit. We, the next, the next section discusses significant audit matters. Says that management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, and it describes where those accounting policies are located within the financial statements, the description of those. It talks about estimates, that estimates are an integral part of the financial statement prepared by management. And there are really only two real significant estimates for the county. One has to do with your medical claims, the incurred but not reported. It's an estimate of those claims that haven't been paid yet. And then the caper's net pension liability that the state requires you to include in your note disclosures. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit. We provided management with copies of any corrected and uncorrected errors or misstatements. The corrected misstatements are in the form of audit adjustments, which your staff have already recorded. The uncorrected misstatements are just, you know, normally smaller misstatements that deal with timing. I think that this year, the only unrecorded misstatement dealt with last year's interest revenue that didn't get, let me go back, 2019 interest revenue that got recorded in 2020. We had no disagreements with management. Then... In addition to the financial statement, there's a significant amount of supplementary information that goes behind the financial statement, the notes to the financial statement. And we've also given a, in relation to opinion, on that supplementary information, and I'll point out where that's at in the financial statement, so you know what I'm talking about. And on the last page, there's just, you know, one reminder here about oversight of accounting functions. You have certain offices that you have limited staff in, so it's always good to remind you that, to perform other procedures to help monitor those offices, like what I've said here, I think comparing budget comparison reports and that sort of thing. Move on to the financial statement. And the first page after the table of contents is our independent auditor's report. It's kind of divided up in different sections as well. The first part discusses management's responsibility for the financial statement. And it is management's financial statement. We prepare, we prepare, we draft the financial statement based on the trial balance and other accounting records of the county. The next section discusses the auditor's responsibility, which is to express an opinion on the financial statement. And it also discusses what an audit involves. You know, we have different procedures that we perform, and that's based on risk, you know, where we see the risk areas are. Because the county prepares their financial statement on the regulatory basis, we have to give an adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Then we turn around and we give you an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis financial statement that the county, county has. And basically, what that means is you have a clean opinion. And the next, the last, one of the last paragraphs, we have a report on supplementary information, and that's where we've given our, in relation to opinion, on the supplementary information. And the third page of the audit report is just, discusses other reporting that's required by government auditing standards. And because the county had a single audit, again this year, you're required to have, have the audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. So... Yeah. This paragraph is required, and there's an additional report included in, in the financial statement document. Your financial statement is pages four, five, and six, and seven. I'm not going to go into great detail, just to summarize what, what you're looking at. So you can compare where you were the year before to where, say, like, beginning of January 2020 to the end of the year in 2020. We start with your beginning unencumbered cash. We present the receipts, the expenditures, and ending unencumbered cash. And if you look down through here, under the ending unencumbered cash, if you see any negative amounts here, that means that you had a cash basis violation, which you had one small one here that... One of the biggest change, changes in your financial statement this year dealt with the CARES Act grant, where you received 11 million dollars and spent just under 11 million dollars. Page seven is your composition to cash. It shows the different type of bank accounts and investments that the county holds. Pages eight through 18 are the notes to the financial statement. Note one, as I alluded to earlier, is your summary, summary of significant accounting policies. I think I also told you I wasn't going to read it to you, so. Is, if there's, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. On page 19, there's a summary of expenditures compared to budget. It presents a certified budget, any budget credits, a total for comparison, and then the expenditures charged to the budget, and then any variance. And if you had a positive amount here, you would have a budget violation. There were no budget violations. And that is the beginning of all the supplementary information, is page 19. So I'm not going to go through any, any of it. I'll just, just point out a few things in here. Pages 56 and 57 are a report on government auditing standards that we're required to provide since you were required to have a single audit. Page 58 is what's called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. It lists the different programs that the county had during 2020, that they expended money from, the largest of those being the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Page 59 is the notes to that schedule. Page 60 and 61 is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program and on internal control over compliance that's required by the Uniform Guidance, which is what the Single Audit Act requires of you, or what the government requires of you. Page 62, this is a Schedule of Findings and Cost, and... It basically describes any, describes the audit report that was provided, the opinion on, on that audit, lists any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls that are required to be reported, both on the financial audit and on the compliance audit over, over the federal grants. It shows the program that was tested as a major program. In other words, the federal program that we identified, that we needed to look at, that had the, either the most expenditures or the greatest risk involved. And that being, that was the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And then at the bottom, we list any findings. So, we're happy to report, there were no findings either on the financial audit or on the single audit. And page 63 is a summary schedule of prior audit findings that were corrected during the year.
Okay.
What other information would you like to know?
So the bottom line is, Celine County's in good shape.
They're doing, your, your staff has done a good job.
And Randy, do you have any idea how many years your firm has conducted Celine County's audit?
Well, the firm that I'm at now, they've done the audit since 2008, I believe, 2009, I mean. Prior to that, I've, I've been involved with the audit here for over 30 years.
Very good. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? By the Commission? Any questions? Any comments or information by the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the 2020 financial audit as presented. Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 156-21 Acceptance of 2020 Audit Report. Any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wies?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. At this time, we will move into informational items. Item one.
District Court Status. Todd Heitzman, Court Administrator.
Good morning Todd.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Great.
Yeah, good. Just to kind of give you an update on third floor District Court, where we're at with all this, I say the pandemic and everything this past year. The courts are engaging and back having jury trials. We have had two jury trials go, and they have ran smooth. I mean, we're, we're happy, we're pleased. I mean, we're, we're happy, we're pleased. Uh, I say the jurors come, they're willing to serve, and, um, so the two that we have have worked out well. Several of the jury trials are, uh, that are scheduled are going out. Uh, we have had two of them go before a mediator, and, uh, this is a new program that we're using, um, where we have, uh, if you remember Judge Helmer, he's a licensed mediator, um, uh, and he's done two cases, both cases have settled where they did not have to go to trial, uh, which I would say would save jury fees anywhere from $400 to $4,000, depending on the length of a jury, or length of a trial. So we're pleased with that. We'll just see how the rest of the jury trials, uh, some will go, a majority of them, I think, as history would indicate, will not go. As far as, uh, I want to say restrictions and stuff that we have upstairs, we still have, we're under Supreme Court rule, uh, for masks mandate. And that'll happen if they, both the city and county, if they were to drop the mask mandate, if you had to come to court, when you get up on third floor, you would still have to wear a mask mandate, um, at least until, uh, Supreme Court, uh, disregards the rule, so, or cancels the rule. So, that's where we're at on third floor. Any questions for District Court?
Uh, Todd, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, uh, regarding the mask on the third floor, and you said the Supreme Court, is that the Kansas Supreme Court or the federal, uh, Supreme Court?
Kansas Supreme Court.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good question. Any other questions? Thank you, Todd.
All right, very good. Thank you. Have a good rest of the day.
You too. Item two.
Uh, Roden Bridge Update. Darryl Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Darren.
This is our Maintenance Department update for, uh, the months of March and April. If Brad could start the slideshow. We did, uh, with the wet weather, we did, were able to burn several tree piles throughout the county. We did receive the $51,000 grant money from KDHE for the, the purchase of the new excavator. Um, that was all wrapped up and taken care of. This is, uh, a piece of distressed pavement. Not a whole lot wrong with it, other than these alligator cracks here. So what we do every spring and every fall, next slide, please, is we have what we call a dura patch machine. This is what they call injection machine. It mixes the oil and the, the rock as it comes out, and what you do is you blow the area off free of debris. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the rock and the oil, uh, coming out of the machine. Next slide, please. And then this is a picture of the, the finished pass. You put, uh, just dry rock over the top of it, and this does two things. It seals the water out of it, and, and it doesn't allow the water to stand there. When you get a pothole, you get what they call, um, a depression in the road, you get what they call a fluid hammer. It's when you're, the water's sitting there and your tire hits it, and it just beats the pavement like, like you're just standing there with a sledgehammer. So we do this every spring and every fall. It, it, it's a little bit of investment to save a lot of money later. Next slide, please. We got two new motor graders. The third one should be here next week. This was approved by the commission in, in January. Next slide, please. This is State Street Road looking west towards Brookville Road. We started our shoulder edge wedge projects for the spring. This is part of our safety improvement program. Um, this is State Street from Headville to Brookville. Uh, next slide, please. This is Head, this is also State Street, looking west towards Brookville. Next slide, please. This is Headville Road north of Interstate 70. Next slide, please. This is, uh, this little piece of pavement is Pleasant Hill Road going out to the Sundowner Edition. This is, um, just west of Headville Road. Uh, next slide, please. This just simply shows the operation. In the front, you have the trucks placing the material, and then the wheel compactor. Uh, we use the, uh, the tires on the motor grader to compact it, and then we broom off the excess to, uh, so there's no hazard to the traveling public later. And this just provides a little two-foot edge wedge, um, where if a motorist would happen to veer off of the road, he would be able to correct without getting what they call overcorrection, when the tire scrubs the pavement and, and rolls the vehicle. We have been intensely doing this for the last 10 years throughout Celine County in Next slide, please. This is Old Lady One, um, south of Assaria. Here, it didn't require any added material. Uh, three of the rural patrolmen simply got together, and then they pulled the excess material from the shoulder, um, where the, the drop off was, off the edge of the highway, and then compacted it with the motor graders, and then just got the rest of it off of there. So that didn't require any material crews. We were just simply able to do that with some, some rural patrolmen. Next slide, please. This is another picture of Old Lady One. Next slide, please. That we did replace four culverts. This is on Don Meyer Road, and typically, when you would see this type of failure, there would be a culvert right here. Um, this area had, had no culvert, so we couldn't, in determining how or why this happened, we looked at some aerial photographs. Uh, next slide, please. And in speaking with the landowner, this happened right here. And right here is a culvert. And when this road was built, none of this was here. So when all of this got built and the land was elevated, the drainage used to go like this. And so when all this was elevated in construction, it changed the drainage. And so the water now comes right here and then goes to that pipe. So what it, this is flood damage. So what it did, when it flooded, this all swirled right here, and it slowly eroded under the road. And fortunately, there were no accidents with this. A sheriff's, but, a very alert sheriff's patrol deputy, uh, called us when this hole was rather small, and then that, what you saw happened later that same day with the road collapse. So what we did was, this culvert up here was in need of replacing, and so we just simply removed it and then put a culvert where the road damage occurred. Next slide, please. This is just, uh, placing the culvert and compacting it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the, where the old culvert was. Next slide, please. And so you can see the culverts are rather close, and so over time, as things change, so does drainage and, and the way we have to approach things. So whenever we replace a culvert, we don't just replace what was there. And engineering gets involved, they look at it and give us the size of the culvert. Um, one good example of that is out there at the landfill. You know, with the, with the landfill operations, they're elevating the earth. And so whenever there's a culvert around there that needs replaced, it, it changes the drainage of the water and how fast and the calculations that they use. So a lot of those, over time, when somebody builds a house, you know, they may be blocking the natural water. So we always take a look at these things. Next slide, please. This is just a picture of some of the maintenance work we do. This is pretty typical, um, with our, uh, there's a culvert right here and, and someone has, um, drove over the end of it. So you get, uh, those heavy rains, and this gets blocked, and then the water backs up. This is a relatively minor fix. Next slide, please. You just go out and get a chain or, or a jack or something, and you jack up that end, and then, uh, clean this out, and it just restores the flow of the water. Next slide, please. Uh, due to the heavy rains, we did have some drift in some of the areas throughout the county. Um, and this is just a picture, I believe, up on Gerard Road of some drifts and things that we have to go clean out, so they don't eventually wash up under a bridge and, and block the flow of the water. Next slide, please. This is just the removal of that drift. Next slide, please. This is a picture, and this is from our Cartograph software. We created some new codes this year that would allow us to know where we have either rocked a whole mile or put sand on a whole mile. These are the roads that in April and May, we re-rocked, so each one of these red dots represents a mile of aggregate, or two miles, depending upon how far the, the stretch is. Next slide, please. And this shows the miles that we just put sand on. We're just needing a little bit of aggregate to, um, supplement what was there. We also haul, we hauled, um, 11,541 ton of rock, 2,783 ton of AB3, and 2,475 ton of sand. We repaired and replaced 338 signs or posts, and we set barricades for road closures and work crews by, the work complete by the sign crew. The rural operators have been performing laybacks in all the territories, and we did start the summer mowing project. On our, on our plans, we are currently ed wedge, edge wedging Brookville Road north of Interstate 70 and some south also with, uh, earth. Um, we do, we need to replace the culvert on Niles Road south of Tinkler. The culvert's there, we, the weather just hasn't allowed us to get to that area with the, the rains being every week or so, it's very wet down there, but as soon as the weather allows, we will replace that. Um, we're currently repairing the culvert at State Street and K-140. Um, we're gonna upgrade Thatcher Road from Crystal Springs to Ohio Street from earth to gravel. And our budget is in line with the traditional normals. Nothing, uh, standing out or, or any concern there to us. Any questions?
No. Darren, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, a few weeks ago, at our meeting, we asked about the, uh, Niles Road project south of the, uh, the Gun Club.
Yes, sir.
We, we were told it had been too wet to do anything there, and I was just wondering, uh, what the status of that project is, because we promised those people we'd get on that just as soon as we could, and that's several months ago, really.
You know, hopefully, if, if the weather lets up a little bit, the culvert's there, and as soon as we are complete, uh, with edge wedge of Brookville Road or, uh, State Street and K-1, K-140, whichever crew would become available, I'm sure they'll look at it and see if they can go down there and complete that. It is at the top of our priority list.
I would hope so.
Okay. And Darren, what's the status again in regards to the State Street and K-140 structure?
Well, hopefully, to, hope to have that open Friday or Monday.
And the cause of the collapse?
There was, there was a, a concrete culvert, um, in there that had separated at, at the, one of the sections, and the water going through it had undermined the roadway, and it was beginning to collapse like you saw in the picture there. What, what happened is, was we were doing our dura patch and pothole repair, and they simply thought it was a pothole, but when they got there, what they found was a hole in the road and a void underneath it.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Darren.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Item three.
National Heritage Areas. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Uh, number three, item three?
Oh. I'm sorry, what?
Item number three.
Oh.
You skipped, uh, three. You went to four.
Did I skip somebody here? Let me see.
Community.
Oh, I'm sorry. Road Communication Tower Site Location. Hannah Stanbaugh, Duffy County Administrator.
Thank you. You bet. Good morning again, Hannah.
Good morning. Um, this is a, just information and, uh, to answer any questions that the commission might have as part of, uh, the design process for the emergency, uh, radio communication system does require for a communications tower to be located in the south central portion of the county. And this is necessary to accomplish the coverage guarantee that our contract with Motorola has, um, been approved with, as well as just overall necessary coverage for all of our different public safety agencies. So between staff, Motorola, and our consultant, TUSA, we have explored quite a few different options. Um, specifically, our, our contract with Motorola does include for, uh, just a little over $1.1 million to construct a tower in that south central portion of the county. So we have looked at several different options to be able to figure out what the best fit would be. So in that, um, in, in that assessment, there is county farm ground that is located at Ohio and Salem'sburg. Um, this site was reviewed. It would change the guaranteed coverage that Motorola would provide from 96% down to 95.5%. We have had discussions with all of the first responder agencies, um, have looked at all the coverage maps that Motorola has done to, um, evaluate that particular tower site and see no concern, um, from any of the ends of the, the public safety agencies. This tower would be a 400-foot self-supporting tower and is able to meet all of the necessary separation distances and fall zones that are related in county code. We have contacted the Business Stress Cast. In our evaluation of this particular property, I mean, our, our goal was to try to minimize as much as we possibly could of that farm ground, fully while knowing that this particular tower site is 400 foot and it would be on a 100 by 100-foot, um, concrete, well, not really concrete, but, uh, a, a, inside of a 100 by 100, um, compound. So looking at that and looking at access to power, um, we were able to determine that there is power from the business that is to the north of there that could be extended to the tower site location, as well as the assistance from our Roden Bridge Department to help with building a access area from the property to the north to that tower location itself. Um, we have had contact with Stress Cast as well, and they were more than willing to work with us as far as providing us with some access agreements. Um, so then, again, that we're not trying, trying to minimize the disruption to the county farm ground piece of itself, um, as well as just the feasibility with trying to bring some of those trucks and everything down to the tower site for it to be built. We have contacted with, with EverGee as far as the cost associated with running power from, um, the property to the north to the tower site location, as well as the cost that would be associated with the construction of the road. Um, we would have to look at doing some modification to the lease of, of the tenant of the farm ground. Um, but, uh, again, it's, was just looking at trying to, to preserve as much of that farm ground as, as possible. Um, so just as a note, I mean, we, we, again, we looked at several different options. Um, our contract with Motorola already included for us to build a tower site. Um, so this is, seems to be the most feasible, um, option for us, um, meeting all of the different specifications that have been, um, outlined in the contract with Motorola, as well as even just compliance with county code information, too. Our contract with Motorola is for 15 years. Um, however, it's, I think it's really important to note that one of the decisions that kind of, or one of the criteria that kind of went into the evaluation of this, was the fact that towers themselves are, have that towers themselves are, have a life expectancy of 40 to 50 years. So when we looked at different options that were out there versus leasing or doing anything else, it did make sense to can still continue down the path of actually building a tower that can be used for the county public safety agencies. So our next steps is to proceed with a site survey, as well as the necessary environmental studies that would be necessary to completely deem this particular piece of property, a valid site, and then also proceeding on forward with the conditional use permit process through planning and zoning. So I'm certainly open to any questions that you have for this particular tower site.
One of my-
Go ahead, excuse me.
One of my quick questions is, would be, is that, and you say that you've talked to the rural fire districts and everybody about this 95%. So there, we've got 5% roughly that we don't have any coverage.
Okay, so I, I think probably for a clarification, it's, it's 0.5%. And just because we say that it's 95.5%, that doesn't mean that we don't have coverage there. It just may mean that the coverage is not as great in a particular area. Again, so one of the processes with this is we did have Motorola run us a whole bunch of different coverage maps to take a look, where is that potential loss at? And all of the loss is located in extremely rural areas that is not inhabited by houses or businesses. That's really critical for, for everybody. So that, that was a really big thing to make sure that all the different public safety agencies understood that and knew what, what that difference meant. But looking at all the maps, there was no concern that came across.
Okay, and if I was a rural firefighter, I'm, one of my concerns would be if I was in the, the truck and sitting there and nobody can contact me and I'm sitting there and, and the fire happens to, I, it just bothers me that we're spending millions of dollars and, but we still come back to this, a lack of or not full coverage in these areas. But I, I understand that it is, depending on the weather, a whole lot of different things that this could go from 95.5 to 92.
Right, and I apologize. Another point that I should probably make, too, is that 95.5% coverage is based off of a portable radio on your hip. A car or truck radio is far more powerful, has far more watts.
Thank you.
So a portable radio, this is based off of absolute worst case scenario. You're, you're exactly right, be out there in the middle of the field type of situation.
You bet. Thank you.
Does that help? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's why I was just, wanted to ask that question. Thank you. You took care of that.
Do you have an estimate on the timeframe to accomplish, accomplish the survey and the studies and planning and zoning?
Yes.
Require it in a CUP?
Yes, so the environmental study is probably the one that is going to take the longest. They say that can last anywhere from three to six months. However, that is, it's something that's just, it's very dependent. But that allows us, so at the same point in time that we are going through the environmental study process, we're able to start going through all of the conditional use permit stuff, as well as the FCC and FAA type of licensing, whatever, well, the FCC licensing, FAA reviews, anything like that. So there's a lot that will happen and that will coincide with each other going on all at the same time. As far as actual, let's build, you know, we've got all of our passes to go on ahead and build the tower. That can take probably, I don't know, six to eight months depending, but our hope would be table have something to break ground towards the end of this year. That's the hope.
Hannah, Hannah, is this one of two projected towers? Is that correct?
That is correct. So the contract that we have is for a three tower site. One is in the northwestern part of the county. This is in the south central portion of the county and then the third tower site is located at the tower that is located at the Kansas Highway Patrol Training Center.
Hannah, this is Commissioner Pedrickson and my questions are, revolve around the money portion of this thing. The 1.1 million dollars, that is built into the contract and prior approval, is that correct?
That is correct.
For the tower? Then we get to the $14,700 and the $10,000 to complete the road or in the task and so forth. Are those in the contract or in the proposal? Or is this adding money on to the cost of the entire project?
So it does have the potential to add cost to the project. However, we have got several things that are built into that. So as part of that 1.1 million, we've got 16,000 that is set aside for an environmental study. Well, if the environmental study doesn't cost fully that 16,000, then we have credit. So at the recommendation of our consultant, TUSA, they had asked that these costs can be held by Motorola until the complete entire system is up and running to figure out exactly how much credit we have on the contract to be able to pay for it. We do have some money that is set aside in CIP that we had for some land acquisition for tower sites, just in case. So we do have funds that are available that if by chance this was, there were some costs that were above and beyond the contract, but then also hopefully anticipating that we would have credit on the contract that could cover some of these additional costs. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and, but it raises concerns for me also. I mean, you know, I understand that there are contingencies that happen and, and, you know, we continue to, something comes up all the time, but, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned that we continue to add on to many, not just this project, but lots of projects and costs go into the original estimates and that, that concerns me in the long run.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Thank you, Hannah. We'll go, next item, please.
National Heritage Areas, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
All right, now it's my turn up to that.
Way to go, Tammy.
So last week, the commission asked that we put an item on the agenda to discuss a current proposal for an area involving approximately 49 counties in north central Kansas and south central Nebraska that's proposed to be a new national heritage area. And so in the report, I've just very briefly outlined what national heritage areas are and then some of how the controversy that has sort of arisen around this particular one at this time. I don't have a whole lot to add to what's in the report, but I'd be happy to try and answer some questions or take further direction from the commission.
Any comments? I just, once I got to looking into this and, and actually Googling a lot more of the deals and going down into sites, it was another issue is where I noticed there's a, a lot of criteria going on about what has been done and where we're headed and, and the good and the bad and everything. It's, it's just like there's, there's people here about this and then everything else and, and comparing it to issues that clear back to the cowboy Indian days. I mean, the, when we gave contracts to the Indians. And so it's, it's, it's a really interesting situation, the 30-30, and, and I thought it was something new, but it really just goes back to where that the federal government owns already so much land, it's not a, it's not really 30% new acquisitions, it's just a complete total to get there. And I, I look at it as that, yeah, a lot of things are going to be, if, if this does, possibly to close down some ocean areas where water fronts where you can't fish no more, you can't drill oil no more and stuff like that. But it's, it's an interesting situation that we're in. Yes.
You're correct, Mr. Chair. I didn't know if you wanted me to respond to that in any way, but that-
Please.
Yeah, the, the 30 by 30 proposal is an interesting proposal and I think one of the difficulties is that there's not a lot of plans that have been revealed for how that will be achieved. And so I think that creates a lot of nervousness among folks about, you know, what that could potentially mean for different types of federal areas, including the NHAs. But the NHAs themselves have protections for private property. I did contact the, some of the county administrators who are in the counties that are covered by the existing Freedoms Frontier NHA over in eastern Kansas and said, you know, have you run into any problems with, you know, the federal government trying to direct your land use or conversely, have you gotten a bunch of money for this? And the answer was no to both questions. The one, Leavenworth County, they said they didn't even realize they were in an NHA. Like, it's just so not a, not a thing. A couple of other counties had said, you know, we've gotten little dribs and drabs and like $1,500 for our museum. The money is not falling from the sky because we're in an NHA, but we have had no effect on our land use regulations.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, at, at this time, and I, I, and I apologize, Norman, because I did stop you earlier from getting up, so I will allow you to-
If we could ask the public to speak from this microphone-
Norman, come over to that-
Just because of the difficulties-
Yes, yes.
The main microphone, that'd be great.
And I apologize that I stopped you. I, I know that this was an, an item. And you still are under this three-minute rule.
Okay, Norman, Alstoria, Kansas. This is not a land grab. None of this land will be federally owned. It remains in state, local, or private ownership. You can find all this out by going to the grass and grain paper. There's a whole page of it. Gives you the information. So look into this very carefully before you join this land grab issue. I've got quite a bit of this information. It's not what they are putting out in front of the public. It's misinformation.
Okay. Thank you, Norman. Yes, ma'am. Come up to here. Yes.
I'm Carol Ann Bachover from Brookville, Kansas, and I do want to make clarification, and I think the county administrator touched on that. The 30-30 Biden plan is completely different than this national heritage area.
Yes.
And I am concerned, I have friends in southeast Kansas that have small farms like five or 40 acres and they have run into trouble with their, they are in the heritage area now. And the promise is that you're going to get monies for your county. They work through the county commission and the city commission to get zoning laws and restrictions passed for the farming and agricultural community. So I suggest you look into this on a very deep level. I am against the national heritage area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments by commissioners? Okay. We'll move on to item five.
Any, any public comments from Zoom?
No.
Okay.
I just-
No comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
County Administrator's update.
Thank you. So County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes, just three items to update you on. First, as regards the jail project, I am pleased to report that last night at the Salina City Commission meeting, all three of the relevant resolutions, actually ordinances, did pass on their second reading. That would be the vacation of the Woodland Avenue Platted Right-of-Way that goes through our newly acquired property. The amendment to their comprehensive land use plan to redesignate the area from employment to public use, public facilities, and the zoning amendment to change from industrial to the public use, including the jail. So that's great news. We are continuing to meet with the architects. I have a, a meeting this afternoon to talk about the electrical, or I'm sorry, no, the meeting this afternoon is to talk about the fiber optic, meeting on Thursday to talk about the electrical and then two meetings tomorrow to continue running through the building. So continuing to make great progress on the jail. The second issue, as I mentioned to the commission previously a couple of times, the city of Salina has been working on their housing plan. And in particular, last night, they had two proposed projects that were presented to the city commission. And ultimately, the city commissioners did vote to designate two areas for rural housing incentive districts. The rural housing incentive districts are a type of a tax increment district that needs approval at the state level and then also the county and the USD 305 will have an opportunity to weigh in as well. City Manager Mike Scragg has volunteered to come address your commission next Tuesday to let you know what is going on. The commissioners had a really robust discussion regarding policies and whether they were sort of putting the cart before the horse by designated, designating areas before they had policies in place. And so they, they took pains to stress that I think the majority, if not all, of the commissioners said that they, they wanted to move forward with sending these areas to the state for review, but that did not mean that they were committing to the projects because they did want to finish their policies and then hear from the county and the school district as well. So, so like I said, it was a good discussion and that's coming our way next Tuesday for more, more conversation. And finally, again, put the American Rescue Plan on the agenda. I did have Deputy Administrator Stanbaugh and I were on competing Zoom webinars last Thursday, talking about the rescue plan with two different groups. Continue to receive the same message regarding, you know, the, the feds are taking as long as possible to release guidance. So next Monday, May 10th is their deadline, that is the 60 days. So we're hearing, you know, next week to, to actually have the guidance. Did get some good, good response from other communities around the country about the things that they're thinking of using the funding for. So that was a, a good, positive discussion. We also, as I, as I mentioned to the commission previously, we have issued a request for proposals for consultants to help us manage this funding in view of all the other projects we have going on. We did get five proposals back and- We did get five proposals back, and Emergency Manager Michelle Barkley helped me review those. We agreed on, you know, the, the rank of those proposals. We're trying to get a phone call scheduled with the top contender to address some questions, and then we would work on a contract, of course, to bring to you all. I'm not in a huge hurry to do that because I kind of want those guidelines from the feds out first before we enter into a contract with a consultant. So that's where we are on that, moving forward very slowly. Be happy to answer questions.
This is Commissioner Vidrickson, not regarding any of the things that you've discussed here today, Phil, but a few weeks ago, you mentioned that the jail and the health department and a few other county-owned businesses were under, being provided their, their natural gas by an outside agency rather than Kansas Gas, and we, too, got hit with some exorbitant bills for our gas. And I think at that time, I, I asked for some background as to how we got put in that position, number one, and how long ago that was, and how restrictive the contracts were, and I haven't heard back. So I was just wondering if we had been able to ascertain any information regarding, regarding that situation?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson. So actually, yesterday, received a new draft contract from what is now Symmetry, the, the gas provider. And so that is in Mr. Montoya's hands for review. That it took some doing to get that out of them, but received that yesterday. So the path forward would be to complete that review with Mr. Montoya and then bring it in front of the commission for your consideration. And I think that would be the point at which we would go through some of that, you know, how we got to this point and, and how you want to move forward. So, yeah, still, still tracking that, just has been, like I said, taken, taken some effort to get that contract.
Okay, I'll hold mine further questions in, because I do have some, and I'm, I'm concerned about this situation. Thank you.
Yes, and I, I will say, the, I, you know, also share, share your concern, but I did receive a report from the Senior Center, their bill has returned to normal range. So we think it was just that, you know, the February spike, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it wasn't significant because it was certainly a lot of money, but it's, you know, we're, we're back to normal, we think, so.
Well, and I'll liken it to my, to my home bill that went up 70% in one month and back to normal, but to go up thousands of percent or whatever it was, I mean, from, what, $4,000 to 40-some thousand and just in one building? Wow.
And, and to jump onto that question, thank you, Mr. Vidrickson, Mr. Administrator, is that when you come back with us on this here, will we have any information from, let's say, Kansas Gas in comparison to what they could provide us at cost?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I would like to be able to present to the commission a full suite of options, including going with Kansas Gas Service or potentially going with another wholesaler as well. I don't, until Mr. Montoya reviews the contracts, I don't know how many options we exactly have.
Gotcha.
So that's why I'm kind of hedging my bets on that. But I certainly do think it's in the public's interest for the commission to review all the options for that gas service.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, item six.
Commissioners comment?
Any comments? I just want to say that it's like last Friday, I did attend the grant approval from the federal government to the city, Tony's Pizza Events, or not Tony's Pizza, but Tony's Pizza out there, Schwanz. And it was just a neat deal. I, of course, I hadn't been out by there in a couple of weeks, and it was just amazing that they already have the walls up and how big this is going to be. I just was shocked already how fast it's moving, and, and it was a neat deal that the Senator Moran was there to present the, the grant to them, and, and it was, it was a really interesting situation that they have that available. So I just wanted to bring that up also. Any other comments? Any announcements? Or item seven, excuse me.
Announcement.
Okay, at this time, we will recess to room 107. We have an executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, staff would request an executive session under the land acquisition, preliminary discussion regarding the acquisition of real property, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing acquisition of land for one of the tower sites. We would request that for 20 minutes, which would reconvene us about 10:36.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I would make that motion, as stated by Administrator Haynes, Smith Haynes.
I second that.
I'll ask for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wiese?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks? Motion passed 5-0. We will adjourn for 20, 20 minutes, you said? 20 minutes. Any other comments or questions from anybody?
Do we need to mention that no action was taken in the?
Okay, no action was taken at this time. So anyway, I guess, once we finish, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.